My mom says my neighborhood school isn't good enough.
How am I supposed to know my kids are getting the best education possible?
Welcome to Good Schools for All, a podcast from the investigative news organization Voice of San Diego and the Education Synergy Alliance.
We cut through the jargon and polarized debate to get you the news and ideas that matter. Good schools are at the heart of our democracy and economy, and we're about good schools for all kids.
We hope you'll learn and maybe teach us something.
It should be an excellent school in every community.
Enjoy the show. Well, I'm Scott Lewis from the Voice of San Diego.
And I'm Laura Cohn from the Education Synergy Alliance.
Hi, Laura.
Hello, Scott.
Hey, do you ever find yourself in this situation where you're telling your child, probably not since you have older kids, but you're saying like, "You better finish that hamburger before I let you have ice cream."
Yeah, I've said that many times through their childhood. It's not working anymore, but yeah, used to.
I just, I was doing that recently, sitting there. I'm like, "You better finish that hamburger." I'm thinking to myself, "What am I doing?" I'm like, "Finish that junk food before you get more junk food."
Right.
It's just, it's like, like my desire to get in protein has reverted just to the point where it's like, I just get it in his face.
Any form of protein.
So I, have you ever heard of any good ways to, you know, like change some, you know, kid's diet? Like, it's just, it's brutal, right?
You know, like the advice you get is to lay off, basically, and just put, put good food in front of them. And they'll figure it out over time to eat it. I guess I've had that success somewhat with my daughter, who used to be super picky and has just added more foods over time with being confronted with them. But we definitely use that, those leverage strategies also.
It's so funny you say that. Finish that pizza before you get cake. All right, we've got a special show this week. You ever heard of the County Office of Education or the County Board of Education? We are going to help you understand what those are. They're going to be on your bout if you're in the San Diego County region. Most of the region, anyway, of San Diego is going to have a decision to make about the County Office of Education. So you can listen to this and become more informed. Just, just to give you some background, now, this is not necessarily a school district like you might think, like San Diego Unified School District, Poway Unified School District, Sweetwater. All these places are actual districts with a superintendent and a board that manage a bunch of schools.
Within a specific geography.
Exactly. The County Office of Education covers the entire county, is run by a superintendent whose job is overseen and approved by a Board of Education. But unlike some of the school districts, the Board of Education, the five-member board of that, of the County Board of Education, does not necessarily do a lot of the same sort of policy approvals and individual appointment approvals and other things like what the, what say the San Diego Unified School District does. It's a $600 million budget at the County Office of Education. They do have schools, though.
They do. They, they run court and community schools, and they contract as well with some schools for special populations. And they also have one rather large charter school with over 1,600 students in it.
Which one is that?
It's called Literacy Charter School. And at the secondary level, it's called Liberty Charter School. And it's headquartered in El Cajon, but I think it's, I can't quite tell. I think it's mainly online.
Right. So the County Board of Education and the County Office of Education, the County Office in particular does a lot of things. And it's run by the Superintendent Randy Ward. And we're going to talk about, by the way, his future, which is, I think, one of the most interesting parts of this discussion going on about the future of the Board of Education. But also, the County Office of Education also pools legal resources for school districts. So for example, if, if school districts face lawsuits all the time, as you can imagine, and the County Office sort of coordinates the legal pool, the sort of legal fund for a lot of these. And if you're a small school district and you need IT support or other sort of support that you can't pull off yourself, the County Office of Education helps both create solutions for that and support for different agencies.
They do that. They also provide some professional development and curriculum support for school districts. Sometimes they have authority from the state to provide that service and some extra funding from the state. Sometimes they get grants to do that work. They also play a role in out-of-school-time programming across the county and a big role in early education, actually, a really important role contracted with First Five San Diego to do our quality rating and improvement system. We've talked about that before, with potentially a much expanded role in that area coming if a proposal by the governor is passed by the legislature.
Help me explain. What do you mean?
On the early education side? So the governor is proposing to eliminate transitional kindergarten, eliminate our state preschool program, and combine the dollars that had been going into those programs and block grant it out to school districts. In his latest proposal released just late last week, there are a lot of provisions that empower the County Office of Education to oversee those block grants. And also for school districts that don't feel like they have the wherewithal to administer preschool for kids, they can use the County Office of Education to do that work on their behalf. So it would be a really substantial expansion of the powers of the County Office if this, if this portion of the governor's proposal passes.
So that means then that, like she said, is run through the county superintendent of education. And that job is overseen, of course, by the County Board of Education. And you'll find, and I think here are some very interesting things about what Greg Robinson, the current chair, the current president of the Board of Education thinks about the supervisor and what the future of that role should be. So if those grants are important, then the person administering those grants is going to be very important. And then therefore, that person and who that is will be very important. And so we tried to set up a debate between Greg Robinson, the president, and his challenger, Mark Powell, who's being supported by the California Charter Schools Association. And, and in a sort of surprisingly interesting investment in this kind of remote or not really often discussed position in local politics, has suddenly become an interesting debate. There's actually four seats up. We asked Mark Powell to join Greg Robinson in this debate, and he refused. And so more about how that worked out after our number of the week.
Our number of the week is 1,600. That's the number of students that are, at any one time, enrolled in San Diego County Office of Education schools. But that, that number, which sounds relatively small, is actually deceiving because there are about 12,000 students who cycle through County Office of Education schools over the course of a school year. Because their schools are there mainly for kids who are involved in the juvenile justice system, kids who've been expelled from their local schools. And so they, they give them a place to go to finish up their school year or to, to be while their appeals of their expulsion are underway. Or if they're involved in juvenile schools, to get them education while they are part of the juvenile justice system.
We also have a correction from a previous number of the week.
Yeah, I left out a couple of important words when I said the number of the week on our English learner podcast. I said that 75% of middle and high school students are long-term English learners, and of course, that's not the case. It's 75% of high school and middle school English learners are long-term English learners, meaning those English learners, three-quarters of them, have been classified as English learners for seven years or more. So sorry about that, everyone.
The point was obviously to highlight how they get stuck there.
They do. They, they get classified that way, and they cannot pass the test that allows them to become unclassified as English learners. And we need to, and actually, the districts and schools are mobilized to figure out ways to help kids pass out of the English learner status more quickly.
All right, and our what's working this week?
What's working is John Spiegel, who's the science leader in the County Office of Education. I just wanted to celebrate the great work that he and his staff are doing to help the schools and districts in San Diego County implement the next-generation science standards. We talked about these with Trish Williams in our, I think it was our third podcast. These are new standards just for the science area. They're really changing in a dramatic way how schools are going to be teaching science, both introducing it in the elementary level and, and changing it for the high schools. And John and his staff are providing lots of professional development opportunities, lots of online resources, so that I think our county is really going to be on the forefront of implementing these great new standards as a result.
Okay, we're joined in the great Voice of San Diego studio downtown San Diego with one of the candidates for this county school board. This is the County Board of Education. And there are five seats, and four of them are up for election. And we were pleased to be, our invitation to debate was accepted by Greg Robinson, the educator, the trustee that represents District One of the County Board of Education. His opponent, Mark Powell, refused to come. There's no simple way to say it. I'm going to try to call him later and see if we can get some perspective on why that was. But he did not want to come. He cited some reasons. Why, we can get into those. But first of all, let's just get into who you are, Greg. Welcome.
Okay. Well, first off, I'm always much better debating myself than other people.
You're like me, probably. Toodle around the garage and you're arguing with yourself, right?
And the thing is, I usually lose when I'm doing that.
All right, so Greg, talk to us, first of all, about who you are. You're a teacher in the community college system, right?
Yeah, I am currently a professor of sociology in Grossmont College. I have taught in a number of institutions of higher education. I've taught in University of Texas system, University of Maryland system. But I've also taught at the K-12. I was a substitute teacher, actually, in San Diego Unified a number of years ago. I got my PhD out of UCSD, where I worked with Bud Mehan, the sociology of education. I've spent my life in education and particularly focused around the needs of the most vulnerable children, low-income children, children from disadvantaged backgrounds, English language learners, that sort of thing.
All right. And so you are, this is your what? How many terms have you been on the Board of Education?
One.
All right.
Almost one. I'm three-quarters through my first term.
And you're the chair?
I am chair. I think they, I think we use the term president.
All right, is that, is that a rotating, or do you?
Yeah, it's more or less rotating. I came in, however, when the previous chair had to resign because she moved from her district. And at the time, I was vice president, so I simply assumed that role. But then I was elected again this last January.
All right, in the previous segment, we talked about the actual things, some of the things the County Office of Education does and the, and the County Board of Education does. But just give me a distinction about what, you know, it's not necessarily the same as a, as a school district with a superintendent. You, as a Board of Education, have a few limited things you guys can influence, right? And what are those?
The superintendent, primarily. Yeah, people often confuse the County Board with San Diego Unified. One, we're not. But two, a County Office of Education, a board, has much more restricted control than a traditional district does. We have no say over personnel. The standard line an awful lot of people get told when they get elected to a board is that is you've got one employee. That's usually an exaggeration for district folks, but it's not for county. We really have just one employee, and that's the superintendent. The other thing that we have more formal control over is the budget, that all budget items come to us for approval. And then finally, we do have a say formally over policy and program, but that tends to be kind of a gray area.
Now, just sorry to interrupt. Just one of the things that's interesting, though, you don't, you don't get to approve labor deals that come through.
No, nothing.
So you have say over budget items, but not necessarily labor negotiations at all, which is different, much different than in school districts.
Yeah, maybe say a little bit more. So the County Office of Education does manage some schools directly and contracts with a few schools, but maybe that's not the bulk of your responsibilities. Could you describe it a little more?
Well, we don't manage other districts unless it's a peculiar circumstance. I mean, we will come in, as we did down in Sweetwater, if there was a disaster situation where all the board members basically got indicted. That's a very unusual circumstance.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, exactly. But we do manage the county schools, the community schools, and court and juvenile justice. And those are the most vulnerable children in San Diego County.
Yeah, so for instance, one of the schools that the County Office of Education jointly manages is the Monarch School, the school for the homeless in, in the East Village, Barrio Logan area. And, and that's a public-private partnership with that.
Yeah, the education is provided solely by us, by the county. But there are other facilities and other programs that are, that are instituted through that. They have kind of wraparound services, not merely for the children, but for the families that go there as well. And I think that's a really important point. I mean, we'll get into educational philosophy later, but it's that wraparound services and the whole child that, for me, is particularly important.
And when you describe that emergency financial role of the County Office of Education and the Board of Education, what you're talking about is, is the, the most extreme version would be if a school district went insolvent, it would be the County Office of Education that largely coordinated the receivership that would follow, a sort of a loan from the government of the state, but also some serious sort of authoritarian takeover of the, of the, of the district if it gets, if it gets bad.
Well, there's one step before that. I mean, before it actually, a school district can go to the state and ask for help financially. And at that point, then they appoint a receiver who comes in, an agent who just takes over and really is kind of the dictator. But short of that, when a school district is unable to meet its economic responsibilities, then the superintendent, we need to back up a little bit, because the board has no say over that actually. It's the superintendent who will appoint someone. For example, what they did down in San Ysidro. In that situation, the, the County Office and the person of the superintendent, the person he appoints, goes down, sets up somebody, gives them advice, and they have kind of, not final, well, they have final say. They could have veto over it, but it's not the same thing. It's when you appoint a kind of receiver that comes in from the state.
So are you saying that the County Board of Education didn't have a role in that, in that support for San Ysidro School District?
None. They had no say in that whatsoever, the way we'd have liked to.
All right, well, let's get into that a little bit. So the county superintendent right now is a man named Randy Ward. He's been there about 12 years or so?
Yeah, about 12.
And he?
Before I came.
And he has, his contract is up pretty regularly. I think you have some pretty strong views that maybe it's time for a change.
Well, I do. But Randy himself has said he wants to leave. Usually, we have an evergreen contract, which gets renewed for three years continually. But about, about three and a half years ago, Randy said he wanted to retire. He wanted an unusual four-year extension on his contract, and then he said he was going to leave. And so I, I mean, I have a lot of respect for Randy Ward. He is a dynamic, very bright, articulate spokesperson, and you couldn't ask for a better person to represent the county in the general community in a presentation or a discussion of an issue. But his approach to education is different than mine, and he tends to be somewhat authoritarian, and particularly in regards to teachers. Many of the reforms that he's instituted, I think, are very good ones, but they've been forced down the throats of the teachers without any concern or feedback or even participation.
Like what?
Well, for example, he's taken a large number of our schools, well, first of all, let me just back up. Probably the most impactful one was during the financial crisis, Randy decided to reorganize the entire county. He fired every single principal under the county's jurisdiction and allowed them to reapply for their positions.
And let's describe, these are the 60 or so schools, like, like Monarch, like these other ones.
San Pascual Academy. We have numerous facilities on the juvenile justice system, largely of small little places where kids who've been expelled. And when I say we're the most, well, we educate the most vulnerable, if a child gets expelled from San Diego Unified or from Oceanside, they come to us. And so Randy reorganized that by way of firing all the principals. If you know anything about education, you know the day-to-day security of a teacher is based in their principal. And it completely disoriented and put an awful lot of fear in the part of those teachers. And I kept asking Randy, "Please, just go out and talk to the teachers, reassure them." But unfortunately, I mean, he was so used, one other thing you should know about Randy, he's been that fiscal agent who comes on in the past who came in.
Yeah, in Oakland, there was a bankrupt school district there. He took it over.
Exactly. Not only Oakland, but Compton as well.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a guy who comes in and is used to giving orders, not listening to feedback, because he has to. He has to get things done quickly. But that kind of mindset, which is very good in a place that's in complete chaos and economic meltdown, I think is inappropriate in other situations.
What was the rationale for firing all of the principals?
Oh, he wasn't satisfied with the level and form of education that was going on. There had been a FICMAT report, which is an agency that comes in and gives reports on the status of the, of your district or county. And there's some criticisms of the economic management. They thought that there should have been more consolidation of some of the schools, and they weren't, they weren't impressed by the level of education in some areas. So he then ended up, I mean, I agreed with most of his reforms, but the way he went about that, I mean, to fire every single principal and then allow them to reapply for their job, even if you keep three-quarters of them, it's needlessly destructive.
Oh, so he did keep them?
He didn't, no, he didn't keep all of them. I think he kept less than half.
Well, see, one of the things that's interesting about this, in San Diego Unified, again, a separate district in the city of San Diego, second-largest school district in the, in the state, Cindy Martin, the superintendent there, has said that her primary focus in, in sort of bringing quality schools to a neighborhood is to bring in new principals. And she's changed dozens of principals out and to a lot of the same sort of concerns. Because her point is like, and I think a lot of the point is, you know, teachers, there's a lot of restrictions on what you can change. And, you know, obviously, there's a tremendous amount of laws about, about what they get to do and where they get placed. But she said, you know, principals, we can, we can work with and change, and she has dozens. And, and that's been, that's actually what they point to when you say, "What are you doing to make schools better?" So I guess, you know, why, why might it be okay in that situation, but not with what Randy did?
Sure. I mean, one, you have to look at the number of people who were fired, the percentage. I mean, he fired every single principal. Two?
So you're talking about that sort of technique of firing all and then asking them to reapply?
Yeah, to reapply. And, well, it is a technique. I mean, when it's percentage, I mean, when you do every single principal in an area, I mean, it's different than doing it gradually over time. It's different than doing 20% or 50%. Every single one of them is done like that. That's designed to create emotional, if not educational, insecurity and chaos.
What did you see in the year that followed that?
Oh, teachers were upset and scared. They didn't know what was going on. Morale plummeted as a result of that. But let's go back to the central point. Yes, I have respect for Cindy Martin and what she, what she's doing. So many of the education reforms, and not just what, it's how you accomplish them. And that's what I was saying earlier. Most of the reforms that Randy has, the superintendent, has instituted, I support. But it's the form of doing that. It's the style. It's the lack of concern about the impact as you bring it on, on scale. We've seen that so often in education. If you go back to the Burson years in San Diego Unified, I'm sure you're familiar with that. And you take a look at the criticism that comes from people like Hugh Mehan, Bud Mehan, one of my advisors, Linda Darling-Hammon up in Stanford, most of the reforms were supported, but the style of bringing it in was so needlessly destructive. And that's what we've seen in the county as well, is that by bringing it in so quickly without bringing in the feedback of the teachers and the people who are on the line, the good reforms get lost in the conflict and the chaos.
So I'm, I'm hearing that most of your comments so far about Randy Ward have to do with his administration, the superintendent of this set of court and community schools that the County Office of Education manages. That's one portion of the total management responsibilities of the County Office of Education. What are your thoughts on the, on the other side, where they provide professional development and support and back office for smaller districts, those kinds of things?
Yeah, so one of the things, for instance, a school district, a school district might be too small to implement a full technology system. But if they have an idea and the County Office can come in and coordinate their resources with a bunch of others and, and help them literally manage their IT or something.
As a service aggregator for small districts.
Yeah, absolutely. And there are three major areas the county has responsibility. I'm talking to the County Office, not just solely the board. I mean, one is the education of the kids we talked about. Two is the services we provide for those school districts, and particularly, as you point out, the smaller districts who don't have the resources, because they don't have the size to be able to afford those. And the third is the kind of organizational feedback and overview that we have over those. So in terms of those services that we provide the school districts, we see the, some of the most major reforms in education history in the state of California. The new funding mechanism, the local control funding formula. There is a plan that each school district must provide in a response to this new funding mechanism that comes to the county, well, to the, yeah, to the County Office for approval. We've got a whole new curriculum that's being instituted, Common Core. The county has provided training for teachers in those areas, across this, across the whole area. So those services are particularly important that we provide, and we're taking on more and more of those responsibilities. I was just looking at some legislation coming through Sacramento. Pre-K education is the, is going to be block granted in many ways that the adult education has been in the past.
Well, that's proposed by the governor. It hasn't passed yet.
By the governor. It looks like it's pretty likely going to pass. At least, that's, that's the numbers that I've heard. But that then means the county will also assume responsibility for overseeing those administration facilities.
Yes.
So there's just an awful lot of responsibilities the county has, and increasingly so.
Again, that's a responsibility of the county superintendent, though.
Yes, yes.
But you get to decide who that is?
Exactly.
All right, let me ask you, so we both have in front of us this mailer that came from the California Charter Schools Association, touting your opponent, Mark Powell. And obviously, it seems like the charter school network has gotten kind of fired up to get involved in this race. And the role you guys play in charter schools is as a sort of backstop. If a school district doesn't approve a charter application, they can appeal to the County Office of Education and then to you, in particular, the school, the County Board of Education. That's one thing you guys get to do, is, is weigh in on that decision. There was that famous case of the Thrive Public School that in, in the city of San Diego got, the staff for this school district was, was for it, but the school board rejected it. It went to appeal to you. You rejected it. It went to the State Board of Education, where it was finally approved. What is your opinion of charter schools and this sort of concern from the Charter Schools Association?
Okay. I think charter schools play an important and vital role in education reform, but not the only role. And I think we've seen that there have been abuses of that system like any other. And we've seen here in San Diego County, I mean, situations where small school districts are chartering schools, you know, 50 miles away, which there's virtually no oversight. And we've seen some of those close. Now, you mentioned one particular charter, but there are dozens of those. And I'm concerned about the oversight of those. If those schools are offering an alternative that is effective for the children, that has to be supported. But we need to have the same measuring stick to evaluate them, and I think there hasn't been enough of those evaluations. And we've seen some of the chaos that's a result of that. Some of those charter schools have, have gone bankrupt, leaving kids adrift, including the San Diego Unified School District. We've seen some unscrupulous people who are making large amounts of money, and then the, the schools go, go under. So it's a complicated situation. I do support charter schools when I can see that they are doing the effective job. I mean, actually, I know the research evidence on this, and it's kind of, it's complicated. There are good charter schools, there are bad charter schools. There are good public, traditional schools, there are bad ones. Where it seems to be the most consistent is that charter schools do, have, have been very helpful with low-income students in inner-city areas. This study out of Stanford, the Credo Institute, seemed to indicate that. But you've always got to be careful on those in terms of the data. But there does seem to be indications that that is an effective job they're doing. So I support them in those kinds of circumstances, if they're doing the job they're really designed for, but not in all circumstances. I'm not a blank, I'm not a rubber stamp for charter schools. And I'm afraid that's, that's exactly what the charter school folks are looking for. If they're looking for an engaged partner who really want to have, put the kids first, I'm with them on that. But if they're just looking for anybody who'll just rubber stamp them as they come through, I'm sorry, I'm not going to do that.
Well, yeah, what's important in the whole concept of chartering is, number one, when, that the schools have to apply for a charter. So it's a very rigorous process, and it's intended to be. And that's an important moment for the public in the person of the, or as represented by the school board or the County Board of Education to weigh in on whether that school should exist. And then the second thing is ongoing accountability. So I, I hear you that that's an important role that you play in that decision about whether to authorize charters. So what's, what's your view about the County Office of Education's role as an appeal spot for charters that are rejected by local school boards?
I mean, that's what I was saying earlier. It's one of the major functions that we have, is oversight. For charter schools, we also have, we're kind of active as an appellate court. If a kid gets expelled, they can come to us, and we can force them back into schools as well. So charter schools are an important part of what we do, but a small part. I mean, there's so many other areas they're engaged in.
Have you ever?
And I'm a little concerned that this debate is only around charter schools, which is maybe, you know, 5%, 10% of what we do.
Have you ever?
But let me just back up and go back to the issue of charter schools in this particular case. Remember that those school districts, when they get, get turned down, they come to us. Our staff does an independent evaluation of the programs involved, based upon the criteria set by the state. We have never turned down a charter school that wasn't told by our staff that it was not a viable opportunity for those kids. Never.
Have you ever accepted an appeal and sort of reversed a school district's decision?
Not since I've been on. There's only been about three or four, because I've only been on three years now. We have approved the, the reaplication for Literacy First, which is a charter school operated through the county. Most of the ones that we've come through, however, have not been, been supported. through, however, have not been supported. And that's, I'll be quite honest with you, it's solely on the basis of what our staff comes up with. I mean, you're asking, I mean, the charter school folks are asking us to overrule the experts who have an autonomous say over this. And I feel-
The staff that is overseen by the superintendent, Randy Ward.
That's right.
Whose job you do want to replace.
Yeah, of course. And Randy Ward is not opposed to charter schools, as you probably well know. And this is a group of very professional people who work very hard. Now, you, and especially remember, we have no economic interest in turning down charter schools. Quite the opposite. If we approve charter schools, they do come out of the county, and we get a little more money as a result of that. So the fact that our staff then turns them down, given the fact that there is a financial incentive to approve, that these are strongly regulated and overseen by, not by me, or even by the superintendent, it's by those folks in the area, how would you feel sitting on a board and your staff is telling you, it ain't going to work?
Yeah. Let me ask you, one of the reasons Mark said, Mark Powell said he didn't want to come in today was because he still felt burned from a 2012 campaign experience in which the American Federation of Teachers attacked him, and it turned out to be a false attack. But it was, it still burns him. And he says, just because you're part of that network of the American Federation of Teachers, that that was abhorrent to him. The AFT did get more involved in this, in this sort of board. You're a member of the AFT, and I think three others of the five-member board are a member of the AFT. Why do you think the AFT cares about this board?
Because they care about education. There is no financial or professional interest whatsoever on the part of the AFT in these boards. Doesn't represent a single teacher in those areas. Doesn't get one dime out of that. The AFT is concerned, like any other professional organization, the quality of education. And that organization, as most teacher organizations, believe that education starts with the highest-quality teacher in the classroom, and that's what they're committed to. I mean, if you're asking in general about, yeah, I mean, that, I have no idea. This was, I was not even around when, the last time around, that he got burned by that supposedly. So I wish he was here. I'd like to talk to him about that. But my, yeah, my membership in a teacher's organization, I'm a teacher. You bring a teacher in here, and we're all going to be a member of some kind of teacher organization. If you have problems with that, you have problems with teachers. I mean, that's, and that really bothers me. There seems to be a focus these days on making teachers scapegoats, that the teachers aren't really doing the job they should, and that we really need to do is just find a bigger stick to hit teachers with. That's not my approach to education, and that's why I am on this board and why we're very strong, very hard to make sure we get the highest-quality education, that recognizes the importance of teachers in the process.
So I know the AFT represents, to my knowledge, only one, teachers in one school district in San Diego County, which is Poway Unified. Do, does AFT represent the teachers in the court and community schools?
Nope.
They're represented by the CTA? Yeah. So, so is the, I have sort of a, maybe it's a related question, but I've been curious about why it is that so many County Board of Education members are from community colleges? How, where did that come from?
Because of the interest in the education of these kind of kids. I mean, we at community college teach, we at the community college teach precisely the kind of children that are being educated in the county offices, foster youth, low-income English-language learners. And we come with that kind of a commitment to those kinds of students. And that passion for education for those kinds of students is exactly the reason why I got involved. And I know almost everybody else on that board has that same passion for those kinds of students.
Sure. I think when you describe teachers as being used as a scapegoat, there's another sort of spin on that, that is like, well, we're trying to find, recruit, and retain the highest-quality teachers. As you said, that's the foundation of a good education. And so I think there's some concern and some hope that you could both recruit and retain them, and then also incentivize and pay them what they're worth, but then also evaluate and either counsel or sort of move poorer-performing teachers out of the system. That's a much sort of nicer way to say some of the things that you described there. Is there any part of that that you take issue with?
Not really. I mean, that, the key is getting the high-quality people into education. We've seen that comparatively. Now, Finland is the classic example of this. Places where teachers are respected, financially fairly treated, and have status in the community, in which they come from the top of their classes, are the places where students do best. So the focus on teachers is a scapegoat. What I mean by that is, we know that there is a, teachers are part of the educational process, but let's back up a little bit. A good education, it's kind of, I always think of it as kind of like a four-legged chair. It's the focus on the student, but also the parent. And this is just basic sociology of education. The key is what happens, not in the school, but at home. And for me, that's an important part of why I'm committed to education. Things like Proposition I, which is the minimum wage ordinance, this is an educational initiative as well. If a parent has to work two or three jobs, then they don't have the time to spend with their kids at home. That is an education issue. The fact, let me just, I mean, back and tell you about a teacher at Monarch School I was speaking to. He said, look, this is what it's like to teach around here. I have a little girl, fourth-grade class. When she leaves, mom comes and picks her up, takes her in the area around the school, this is in Barrio Logan, till it gets dark, walks her into an alley, and puts her to bed at night underneath a parked truck. When you have growing economic inequality, when you have, and we've been told on our board, there are over 22,000 children in San Diego County that are technically homeless. That's what I mean by the whole child and the whole structure. It's not just what even happens in the classroom. Yes, that teacher is the most important part of what we know schools control.
Exactly.
But we are asking teachers to shovel water against the uncoming tide if, at the same time, we have children like that, growing economic inequality, poverty, the lack of effective language learning in the schools. English is a second language, incredibly important part of what we need to be doing. My goal is to make English language learning, the county used to be a leader in that area, and I'm working with Alicia Munoz and Alupi Gonzalez, who's also up for reelection. You spoke about the other folks. These are people committed to those children who are learning English language. And let's recognize, in San Diego County, over half of all our children are from Latino background, and that's only going to grow, and we need to lead in that area.
Yeah, it's perfect that you're providing leadership on that. And while the kids come from varied backgrounds, some of them very challenging, I'm sure you'd agree that there are ways, just like you just described, that we can get better as an education community at teaching them, and we should be continuously looking for that. I just want to, can we turn back to Randy for a little bit? Because you mentioned something, you said that he got a four-year contract extension three and a half years ago. Does that mean that he, his contract is expiring shortly?
Yep.
Meaning this June, or?
No, 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 not this June. We're evaluating Randy in June, and then he has one more year after that, and that's his terminal year.
So when you, you recognize that there were some schools that are bad in the continuing, in the traditional system. There's bad charters, there's bad, what would, if you were to approach a school that is not performing well, that parents are avoiding, what are the first few things you do to help it?
Well, first off, you make sure you find out where the problem lies. I mean, is it just test scores? I mean, test scores, I mean, I believe in test scores, but I think we've become too obsessed with them.
So how do you know if a school's bad?
But how would I know? I would talk to the teachers. I would, I'm a sociologist. The first thing I would do was conduct surveys and focus groups.
So if they say it's fine, but you know anecdotally or whatever that it is a bad or has a bad impression, is there any independent, objective, empirical way to decide if a school is bad?
Well, I mean, you can look, you can look at test scores. I mean, if it happens to be a high school, you can look at graduation rates. The state has a number of measures of the quality of education, not just test scores. Healthy student surveys, you can take a look at those. You can take a look at the SELLDET test scores of kids on the language learners. You know, you can take a look and see if they're progressing. That basically breaks down the first five years and after that. Those are scores that I would take very seriously. But all the scores, we're not just going to focus on math and science. We need to talk to the teachers. We need to actually, I believe in student evaluations as well as part of this process. We've seen from the Gates Foundation that student evaluations can be a very important indicator of the quality of education. We need to reach out to the parents and make sure that we get the feedback. That is the requirement currently for this new funding formula and the plans that we're supposed to be creating, the LCAPs.
So do you see the County Office of Education as having a role in helping the public understand what quality education looks like, and helping families pick good schools, helping to make sure that we've got good schools in all our communities, or is that not an appropriate role for the County Office of Education?
Oh, I think, yes, of course. I mean, we do have that responsibility to reach out to the whole community, to educate them about the nature of classes, and, for example, what's going on with the Common Core, what they can look for in, you know, in primary care education, that's going to be a big issue, in all those areas. See, the county has these huge amounts of responsibilities. Unfortunately, the board itself has very little direct control over most of them, but the county itself has a large number of very important contributions we make, precisely the kind you talk about.
Well, the County Office of Education and the Board of Education are a big deal. And if you are filling out your ballot right now, or if you're going to go to the polls in June just directly to vote, you should pay attention to this race. Four of the five board members of the Board of Education of the County Office of Education are up for reelection or for an open seat, and it's a very important discussion. This has been Greg Robinson, the president of the School Board of Education, and thank you for accepting our invitation to come down here as opposed to your arrival. And I appreciate the time you've taken, and good luck.
Thank you.
Well, that was interesting. Why do you think we should care about the County Office of Education? We're the, we're Good Schools for All. That's our podcast. What should people care about when they go and make this decision to vote for this board?
Well, there's a lot of potential in the County Office of Education, as exemplified, I think, by what I described as happening in the science area, and what also is happening in the early learning department there. The County Office of Education can provide a lot of innovation energy, can provide a lot of really good professional development for teachers, can be a center that promotes excellence in our schools. And it's doing that in some areas, but not as much as it used to. People tell me about the good old days before I moved to San Diego. So it was maybe 10 to 15 years ago, when our County Office of Education was a statewide center for research and development in education. They were getting grants from all over the country to do leading-edge inquiries and curriculum development and training for teachers. And it really isn't playing that role as much any longer, but it could be again.
And all that, of course, is determined by who gets to be the superintendent. And, you know, it's not just that sort of educational resource as well. It's also a sort of budget hawk situation, too. So who gets to be the leader of the County Office of Education has a lot of influence on what kinds of oversight that school districts have to deal with when they, when they go through their big decisions about, across the board raises to construction bonds, all kinds of things. So-
Absolutely.
This is-
And this next board, these people that we elect right now will be selecting the next superintendent, because Superintendent Ward has said that he will retire during the terms of these next folks.
Yeah. So we wanted to know why Mark Powell would not come to debate, so we called him. We're joined here with Mark Powell on the line. Mark, tell us, why didn't you want to come in and debate?
Well, the main reason I didn't want to come in and debate was my opponent, he's in, he's been, he's been put in to this race and supported by the American Federation of Teachers. And when I ran in 2012, this same union put out a hit piece on me saying that I was fired from my job, I financed foreclosures, a bunch of lies. And Will Carles, one of your, one of your reporters, he's no longer there, he asked me a question. He goes, why did, why did your opponent continue to say you were fired? And I go, I don't know. I have no idea. Were you fired? I said, no. Would you allow us to look in your personnel records at San Diego Unified School District? Said, sure, go ahead. And then the Voice of San Diego did a fact check. And on the fact, fact check, that it was determined that this flyer was huckster propaganda, which is your harshest rating. It means that they used deceptive marketing to gain an advantage over an opponent. And I felt that the same union would just cherry pick, and this is the American Federation of Teachers, their union bosses would just cherry pick soundbites to use against me in another campaign full of false information and lies. I figured it'd be better just to conduct an interview like this, just one-on-one, us together, or two-on-one.
You know, I mean, sort of listening to a debate and pulling out statements is just kind of how politics works, right?
Well, not necessarily. I don't think politics work, works properly when one side is using public funds and resources to make up stories and lies about another side who has, who has not, not the same capabilities to defend, defend myself.
So do you think, one of the things, we asked Greg Robinson about this attack, and he said, well, look, I didn't have anything to do that. And he's going to have to deal with people who are in, you know, teachers' unions. Are you saying, you know, you just can never talk to a person who's in a teacher's union?
No, no, I'm not saying that. But what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see Greg Robinson denounce that, that ad, or at least talk to the same people that supported him and get an answer as to why, I know it was four years ago, why did you put out an ad of lies about Mark Powell when he was running for school board?
Okay.
That's what I, that's what I like to see. Why doesn't he ask that question to the union bosses that are supporting him?
Okay. Let's go to the actual reason for running. I got a mailer in there from the Charter Schools Association from the state, and I asked Greg about this. But the two top points of it, one is that you need to implement term limits for board members. And one thing I don't understand about that is, and this seems to be one of your big planks, I don't, there hasn't been a board member that I can remember that's, that's served anything that would be resembling a multiple terms or even up to 10 years in the last few years. Why, why is this your top plank?
Well, I can tell you why. When Greg Robinson ran, he ran against John Witt. In his own ballot statement, verbatim, he puts this. "The San Diego County Grand Jury has recommended term limits for election boards. Twenty consecutive years in office for one board member is unacceptable. It's time for a fresh face." So he brought up term limits in his 2012 election, and he ran his campaign on that. Yet he did nothing at all to implement term limits, because now that he's in, he wants to be in there for as long as possible.
So you want two terms as a limit?
I want them, exactly. I want, I want the San Diego County Board of Education to mimic what the San Diego City Council has, which is two-year, two, four-year term limits. They have it for city council members. They also have it for the mayor.
Mark, is that a decision that the County Board of Ed itself makes about itself, or would that, would those term limits have to be imposed from somewhere else like the state?
It'd have to be a vote, right?
I would, I would suspect that somebody on the board would have to bring it to the attention of the voters and the public to determine if the, if the parents, if the teachers, if the public feel that term limits for school boards are a good thing. Now, note that most other school boards have term limits. So San Diego County Office of Education and San Diego Unified are unique in that way.
All right. Well, what do you think is the most important thing to do on the board, and why you got to throw Greg off of it?
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. One of the reasons why Greg shouldn't be on the board is because he's not qualified. He's a sociology professor with no experience in K-12 education. Now, I was a former school vice principal, a classroom teacher, a dean of students. And as Greg is a professor, teaches sociology, I teach at National University in their School of Education. I teach teachers, and I teach them curriculum.
Greg is, Greg is, he teaches about the sociology of education, and he was a substitute teacher in K-12.
Well, a substitute teacher is so vastly different from being a full-time classroom teacher.
Sure.
A full-time classroom teacher, you're working day in and day out with parents, you have issues. And when you're a school administrator, you're dealing with, I dealt with employee issues. I dealt with teacher evaluations. I dealt with school safety. I'm a former reserve police officer. I understand police courts and corrections very well. And the County Office of Education houses the juvenile court and community school. And I think if you're also going to run, work in a, on a school board, you should probably have a little bit of business experience. I mean, I own and operate my own real estate brokerage, and I understand what it's like to run a business. brokerage, and I understand what it's like to run a business. So just vastly more qualified than Greg. I'm sure he's probably a nice guy, good sociology teacher, but other than that, I don't think he's qualified. So it's
One of the, the mailer that we got came from the Charter Schools Association. We asked Greg about this, and his point was, well, you know, we've only had a few that have come up, and the county office has recommended, the staff recommended that we didn't approve the appeals that were, that were made to us about these charter schools. Do you have a different perspective or a more liberal interpretation of what you, what you as the board should do when a charter school appeals to the board of education?
I would say that, I don't know, his interpretation may be a little bit off-center, because since 2011, they've had seven appeals, and they've, they've only granted one charter. But as far as, as I'm concerned, you know, charter schools are public schools. They're not private schools. Parents don't pay money for their children to attend charter schools. I'm sure that there's really good charter schools, and there's really bad charter schools. I would give a fair evaluation if, in fact, an appeal does come to the county board. But what's more fascinating, Scott, is this. Let me, let me just share this with you. Let's look at a high-tech high school as an example. That's a charter school, all right? There is a, a list of people that want to get in this school. And if the school is that good, why is it that it cannot be replicated by other districts? I suspect it can.
What role would the county board of education have in, in that, in answering that?
The county board of education provides support services for the smaller districts that may, may not have the facilities or the capabilities to, to house things like curriculum instruction. I'll give you an example. I attended, when I was working as a, a teacher with San Diego Unified School District, a curriculum and instruction academy at the county office of education. It was a year-long academy. I graduated from that academy, and also attended something called a future administrators academy. Even though I was with San Diego Unified School District, the county offered these kinds of, of, of training sessions. And I think that those would be instrumental for the smaller districts who may be looking to replicate a, a, a school of choice, and, and put that into the regular public school system.
Mark Powell, small business owner and, and former teacher, anything, last point you want to make about why, why you wanted to run for this office?
Well, I, I just got to tell you, you know, this, I have a history of community service. I'm, I'm the president of a, of a local Rotary Club here out in La Jolla. And I revitalized the Claremont Town Council years ago. I've, I've got this ongoing community service. But one of the main reasons why, why I want to run is I have kids in public school. I have a vested interest in the education of our students. I'm a graduate of San Diego Unified School District. I went to public schools. I want to do everything I can to help make public schools better for all students, not just for a select few, for everyone. And that's why I'm running.
Mark Powell, thank you for joining us.
Scott Lewis, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye.
Well, there you go. There's your choice. There's, of course, if you live in North County, or in other parts of the county, there's going to be other discussions. But that's kind of the same breakdown, really. If you have any questions or have any feedback for any of these shows we've done on Good Schools for All, please call in to 619-354-1085, and leave a long or a short clip on what you're experiencing, and what you'd like to know. If it's especially about the election, we can provide some immediate information about that. The county board of education is an election, of course, happening in June. And if, if the, if the winner of the primary gets more than 50% of the vote, they win automatically out.
So it's the June ballot that counts on those.
Other school districts, including San Diego Unified School District, the race that's going on, in particular, in the southeastern section of the district, between Lashae Collins and Sharon Whitehorse Payne, that race will move on, guaranteed, to the November runoff, despite the differential in the June primary. That's, the top two finishers always move on to a citywide election then. Almost the entire city of San Diego gets to vote on every district, which is unique in some ways. So stay tuned. Obviously, November, we're going to do a lot of work to prepare for November. There's going to be a lot of discussion about that. But for the county office, that might be decisive in June. And that's another Good Schools for All.
Thanks for listening, everyone.